Good morning, welcome to-
The regular meeting of the board supervisors for June 13. Will I have the first please call the role?
Supervisor Bennett? Here. Supervisor Long? Supervisor Michaels? Supervisor Flynn? And Supervisor Parks?
I don't have my mic on. This morning for our moment of affirmation, I believe we have Pastor Matt Garcia here, great, from Rivers Community Church in Westlake Village. I appreciate you coming all the way this end of the county to give us a moment of affirmation. If you'd like to step up to the microphone, we'd love to hear from you.
It's an honor to be here, thank you very much. First time I've ever been here, so I hope I'm doing this right. But I just wanted to encourage you guys as leaders. I was thinking, last month I received a couple letters from some of my parishioners about resisting some changes that we as leaders were making in the church. And they were personal people, and so there was that natural rub and tension, you know, when you feel like you're disappointing some people. But as I began to really look at their letters, I kept hearing so many words, but you know, we've never done it that way. And I just found myself being reminded of some very fundamental, basic leadership laws that I had forgotten. And that's that leaders always have to embrace change. And I thought with every program, or system, or strategy that we've ever implemented at our church, it's going to naturally reach a point of ineffectiveness at one day, because needs change. And it's a moving target. And so the things that worked for us-
May I ask a question? I wasn't listening when you first started. What church are you talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry, Rivers Community Church in Westlake. Yeah. And so, needs change, and so what worked for us yesterday won't work for us in the future, and what works for us today won't work for us in the future. And so, it makes our job tough as leaders sometimes, because our people resist change. They get warm, and they get comfortable, and I find myself, my people at my church, they build emotional, personal castles around certain methods, and programs, and strategies. And sometimes, change for them is like taking candy from the grasp of a three-year-old. It's really tough for them, but I think that's why God gives us leaders, so that we can cast a vision for something new. And so, I wanted to come here and thank you guys for being leaders in our community, for casting a vision for something new. Because everything that's in place now will one day reach a status quo of effectiveness. And everything has a lid, and it's going to work today, but it won't work tomorrow. And I'm thankful to God for leaders like you, who keep casting a vision, who you don't have the option of convenience or comfort, you want to be effective, and what's best for our people. Ecclesiastes 3 says that there's a purpose for every event under heaven. And there's a time to tear down, and a time to build up, and that's change. And so, God bless you, may you have His grace and His favor as you guys seek changes for our community. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you Pastor Garcia, thank you for coming out and giving us the moment. At this time, shall we do the pledge of allegiance? Supervisor Flynn, would you like to do that?
Please, charge me and I'll touch the flag, ready to get. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, and the ground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
Madam Chair, before you go into agenda review, I just wondered if we could find out whether Chief Roper slept in that chair back there? Or he actually-
That's right, okay, all right. Thank you. Seeing no objections on the minutes, they pass, and now we'll go to agenda review, and Mr. Johnston?
The agenda stands as submitted.
Okay, we have no changes, another one of those remarkable days. And so, with that, we'll go to our consent agenda items, items 10 through 23. Do we have a motion?
We do have a motion and a second.
Seeing no objection on that, then our consent agenda does pass. We'll now go to public comments. Our first public comment speaker is Carol Dean Williams, followed by Ellen Spiegel.
Good morning, Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. I'd like Supervisor Parks, and Bennett, and Long to pay particular attention to this. I'm told that Long and Bennett is the author of your finance ordinance, 4322. And I had the displeasure of appearing before your commission Friday. Would you pronounce her last name? Ranier. Ranier. She has made written loans private. This ordinance makes things public. She has made it private. She does not fulfill the requirements to even beyond the commission. Let me read section 1262. Finally, "To further these purposes, this ordinance provides full and fair enforcement of all its provisions."
You have a microphone, you don't need to yell, Mr. Williams.
Oh, I wish I wouldn't get so excited. Let me read, let me read section 1289. It couldn't be plainer. "All broadcast and print advertisements placed by county candidates or their control committee shall include a clear written or spoken statement indicating that the candidate has approved of the contents of the advertisement." Well, this is an old campaign site for Bennett, and he's supposed to be a champion for campaign finance reform. Mr. Bennett, you want to look? This is on your website, I don't know if you're campaigning under the ordinance, you're not supposed to be campaigning. Here's Jim Dantona. Jim Dantona has approved of this website. Jim Dantona has approved of this website. He followed the ordinance. Here's Linda Parks. Linda Parks has violated ordinance 1289. Somebody could have hacked in there and said all these things, and she said, "Well, that's not my fault." Judy Michaels, she's in direct violation of ordinance 1289. No approval, even with her, don't shake your head, even with her corrected website. Direct violation, no approval. Well, it gets better. 1285C, Linda Parks, through the Ventura County Star, got to blog, B-L-O-G. Seven pages I printed off. That's covered under 1285C as in-kind contributions. Elections told me she has not listed. The Star Free Press doesn't print for free, I mean, the Ventura County Star, it doesn't print for free. She didn't list this in-kind contribution, seven pages. I got it printed off. Seven pages I printed off. That's covered under 1285C as in-kind contributions. Elections told me she has not listed. The Star Free Press doesn't print for free, I mean Ventura County Star, it doesn't print for free. She didn't list this in-kind contribution, seven pages, I got it printed off. 1273D, all loans shall be by written agreement. How was your commission able to insert the word "private"? They have now inserted, "All written loan agreements shall be private." What a farce. I know you guys didn't intend to regulate yourself, I know you didn't intend to prosecute yourself with your own ordinance, but you are so used to breaking the law and getting away with it, you have now created an ordinance that causes penalties that your own commission, your own district attorney has broke his word. He will not prosecute these crimes that your ordinance says, these are crimes. Crimes. I'm looking at two criminals sitting on the board.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments this morning. Our next speaker is Ellen Spiegel. Good morning.
Good morning. I see you have a new microphone since I've been here last, and I appreciate it, since I am challenged and hyped right now. I'm coming before you this morning to ask respectfully that you take item 27 off the agenda this week and put it on next week for a time certain. The first notice that this was going to be coming forth was a notice that the Harvard Department put out stating that there would be an open house on June 1st at 6:00 PM. I was told that a lot of people didn't get flyers for it, I'm not sure exactly how many were sent out, but word of mouth got the conference room of the Harvard Department filling up and going into the hallway where there was no room for anybody to be. I got there at 10:00 of 6:00, it was in, the director was speaking to everybody, and at 6:00 o'clock, there was a pause, and I raised my hand and asked, "Is the meeting going to begin now?" And I was told that the meeting began at 5:30, and the notice said 6:00 PM. And I said, "Under, you know, when was it changed?" "Oh, no," I was told, and there were a group of people there who all heard the same thing. People started coming in at 5:30, so we started then. That to me is an open government. My husband, at one point, and when the diagrams were being explained around the room, had asked, "Why was money spent to have an architect bring these plans forward if in fact, this is an input of what the community thinks of it?" And he was told that, "Well, I can't, to be honest with you, I didn't bring my note with me," he was told something. Whatever he was told, his next thing was, "Then this is not a done deal." She said, "Oh, no, it's not a done deal." That was said at this meeting. Now, looking up what was on the agenda when I saw item 27, I thought, "What?" And then downloading what the staff report was, this was obviously not done at the last minute. You know, we're all here for open government. This is not Iraq, this is Ventura County, this is the United States. We'd like to have an open process, and I know you do also. And I know mistakes are made, I'm not trying to blame anybody. All I want asking you is, would you please be courteous enough to respect the people who did show up, so that they can show up and give their reasoning here, in front of you, before you make your decision? There was not one person at that meeting who said anything positive about what was happening. I could give you a list of everything they said, that's not important at this point. What's important is, is that open process be adhered to in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's regarding-
Item 27, the beach-
Replacement of three beach restrooms and approval for architectural engineering services.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting, and then now we'll go on to our board comments. We were all here till 8:30 last night, so maybe we have some new comments to offer this morning. Supervisor Long, would you like to go first?
Just to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the list I provided.
Thank you. And Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you, ask the board to adjourn in memory of the individuals on this list.
And Supervisor Michaels?
Ask the board to adjourn in memory of the citizens on this list.
And Supervisor Bennett?
Ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and also compliment everybody involved in the budget process, you know, to have it be finished last night. We had, I think we heard a lot of good things from our departments, we heard good things from the public. I am particularly pleased that we were able to stick with the principles of not going over the 8% allocation in terms of property tax, not dip into the reserves, those two principles I think were really important to us. And I thought the summary in the newspaper today was actually very accurate, given how little time somebody had to write that thing, so, thank you.
I would also ask that we close in honor of the people on this list, and we'd like to call out one individual, Philip Bailey, who was very active in Boy Scouts of America for more than 60 years. He was drafted in 1943, assigned to a military police company in China, where he started the first American scout troop in the Orient after World War II, at the American School of Shanghai, eventually started or assisted with troops in Nanjing, Peking, and Tokyo. When he was ordered home in '47, boys from several of the foreign scout troops in Shanghai presented him with scouting uniforms as a parting gift, and these became the start of the world's largest collection of international scouting uniforms, with more than 225 complete outfits. And he subsequently joined the Los Angeles Police Department and worked as a police officer, and just wanted to mention Mr. Bailey, and I know that he and the others on the list will be missed. And with that then, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And that starts with item, I believe, 24, is that right? Let's see. Yes, item 24, and that would be, no, it's the time certain, so we'll go to item 27. And there was a request of the audience to continue this. Hello, Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Lynn Krieger from the Harvard Department. And we are here this morning to ask for your consent to continue the design services. The issue is that we are out of money to continue paying the architect and paying the engineers to do the work to complete the design for these three restrooms that have been on the capital improvement budget for over five years. Last year was the first year funding became available, actually this year, but last year's budget hearing. We're asking you for authority to execute the amendment that would increase the contract, and to do all the work that would be necessary. Certainly would be happy to come back if you wish it on the design, although we are proposing going back to the public. As I think some of you know, the main tower, along with the restroom there, was demolished after a storm. It had previously been reviewed by Public Works and by a private engineer, because over time, particularly in that location, cracks developed in the cinder block, which allows then for the rebar inside to rust and expand, further cracking the building, and it was falling apart. We've actually been watching that one for many years. Finally, a storm did it in, it was taken down, and has since been replaced with portable restrooms, which is certainly not the best service to the public on a public beach. In addition, we have problems with those being tipped, set on fire, other things that don't happen with permanent restroom structures. The other two restrooms are of the same age and show the same signs of deterioration with cracking and spalling of the rebar, which was the main reason that we were asking many years for the county to consider replacement of these restrooms on the beach. In addition, I believe some of the board offices received many complaints over the years. I know we received complaints about the condition of those restrooms and the need for their replacement. I think the board letter, in large part, is self-explanatory, so I will, you know, go to questions on that. There is one major proposal here, and that is for the restroom, and there was no controversy on this, for the restroom that is in the middle, kind of two-thirds of the way down Silver Strand Beach, to move it further down toward the end, near the La Janelle parking lot, in order to, since we're making these restrooms now handicapped accessible for purposes of cleaning, maintenance, security, it just makes sense that people should be able to park nearby. And that's the area where people are most concentrated on the beach anyway, is near the two parking lots, which makes some sense. The homeowners did like that idea. We did have an open house, I understand there is still some confusion, I heard Mrs. Spiegel. It was an open house, not a public hearing. There was fruit, cookies, not much of that was taken, but when people started coming, we, as the staff, went over and started talking to the people who were in the room, walking around, looking at the drawings, because it was an open house setting. And we didn't see any reason to make them wait for a half an hour to start an open house, where the food was already out, the coffee was on, the drinks were out. There was just no reason to keep them standing around out in the hallway. And you all know our little hallway outside the conference room is not very much. So that is our request. We would prefer, if you feel comfortable, that you proceed today, only because we don't have a full board again for a month. We do have architect and engineer time reserved, this is a very difficult time to obtain that time, because they're busy, and I don't know what will happen if we have to call them and say we'll be put off another month before we can call you and have you take a look at the designs. The comments from the public are attached in a summary. We would propose putting the designs, if there are, you know, substantial changes, back out for the public to take a look at, make comments, and then proceed from there. So if there are questions, happy to answer them.
Supervisor Flynn?
Just to ask a question, exactly what are you asking for? Let me just, the reason for the question is based on several pieces of communication. This one is from Phil Bardos, who apparently talked with you-
Correct.
-on the phone, and this is from him, I'm directly quoting. For determining the final designs as well as the location across before going to the board for approval, that was the question asked. Shortly thereafter, I received a call, he had called your office and talked with someone else, and you called him, and that's where I am in this email. He received a call from Lynn Krieger indicating that the board report submitted was to ask for an increase in architectural fees only.
Correct.
And there is no intent to ask for approval to remove or rebuild the restrooms in this board report. She indicated there would be an opportunity for the public to be further involved in the process before she went to the board for final approval, that's what he wrote.
Yeah. What I told him is that the design is not necessarily final at this point. There are reasons, particularly based on SEQA, that we at least need to get the project approved. Last year, when the board approved the budget, the capital budget, it did not have the language in to say the project itself was also approved, that's a technicality, so we're trying to take care of that today. We are not trying to get final approval of the design of the restrooms themselves.
So mainly the architect.
Right.
And the other is open for discussion, because I-
The design.
I would like to, I've asked Johnny if he would accompany me. He said maybe. To talk with you about it. I was not invited to the meeting therefore, I don't know anything about it. So if that's what the intent is, that's my motion to approve that part.
Second.
If I could just, real quick, so the motion is to approve the staff's recommendations?
The motion is to approve what I understand you're requesting, and that is an increase in architectural fees.
I need to be sure that the motion includes all four recommendations of staff, we've got to, you know, we've got to be clear, so I'll support a motion that is for all four of staff's recommendations.
It's not approving the final restroom design, it's just the four things that need to be done to get there, so I'm comfortable with it.
With the staff's recommendations.
I want to make sure I understand what we're doing here. What are we doing?
We are asking you for two things essentially. One is the contract approval, to increase the contract. And the second is the generic project approval, that you do want all three restrooms replaced.
Okay.
That it does conform to SEQA. You're making those findings. Beyond that, if you would like to request us to come back and show you the final design in public or in private, either way, we're happy to do it. This is really just to get the technicalities of the project approved, so we can-
My motion is basically just what you said today.
It's all four recommendations in this-
And to bring back the design, is that what you'd like, Supervisor Flynn?
But I would like a meeting with the three of us.
That's fine.
So the motion then, it can include to bring back the design? Right.
Yeah, I wasn't clear, Supervisor Flynn, if he wants it in a private meeting or back to the board, and it doesn't matter to me which way.
Oh, I want to meet with you and Johnny.
Okay.
But the motion is, as you stated it. That's my understanding of it.
Staff recommendation, of course. Okay, are there any, is there any opposition to the motion?
No opposition if the motion is these four recommendations. It is, correct.
And the motion also reflects what you said, that this is a final approval.
Right.
All right, and then that passes unanimously, and we'll move on to item 28 then? Oh, I'm sorry, we do, Chester Haynes had a card, excuse me, Mr. Haynes? I apologize, sir. We are able to reverse our decision if your testimony indicates-
You can't? Well, my name is Chester Haynes, and I live at 3903 Ocean Drive, which is at the corner of La Brea in Ocean Drive in Hollywood Beach. And one of the restrooms is directly behind where we live, and it's right at the end of La Brea. And the design that's been so far, that I didn't get to go to that even, but my wife went and I got a copy of the drawings, is going to be 24 feet tall. And the restroom there now is about nine or 10 feet tall. Because 24 feet tall, it's going to, from the, if you go down La Brea, it's going to dominate the sky, and from our house, it's going to block quite a bit of the view of the ocean. And I've talked to several of our neighbors, everybody is very much opposed to doing that. And we just don't understand how, we would need to spend all that kind of money to do something that people are against. I know everybody's against it, because I've talked to all my neighbors. So I wouldn't oppose, you know, improving the restroom that's there, or building one at the same height, but building one 24 feet tall is, I think is outrageous.
Ms. Krieger, can you comment on that, of course?
You know, if you read the recommendations, it is, at least my reading of them, follows what you've said.
Right. The design is not yet final, however, just for correction, the restroom on Hollywood Beach is 13 feet high, not 24. The current lifeguard tower is 24 feet high. The roof line on the proposed new restroom would be 13 feet, that's with a sloped roof, if it was a flat roof, it would be slightly less.
Okay, so the maximum height of the restroom that he's concerned about would be 13 feet?
The roof line is 13 feet. There is a ventilation cupola right in the center, you know, one of those little things that sometimes has horses on the top, that goes somewhat higher than that, but the roof line right now is 13 feet. And part of what we need to do, I think, is correct some of the misinformation, that's-
I'm satisfied with what we passed-
According to the strike, the tower is-
Let me put it this way, I'm satisfied with what the motion was, because I think it still leaves clarification open, right?
For the design. So this is moving on then with the, as we voted, the approval of the architecture.
Lynn, would you say again, the confusion over the height, where does the 24 feet come from?
The main lifeguard tower on Silver Strand, right up against the jetty, before it was knocked down, was about 24 feet.
Okay, so the former structure was 24 feet?
Correct.
The new structure will be substantially less than that?
No, he was saying on Hollywood Beach, it's 24 feet, and I said, "We're not proposing anything on Hollywood Beach at 24 feet." Hollywood Beach is just a bathroom, there's no lifeguard tower there.
Right, but substantially below 24 feet?
Right.
And Ms. Krieger, do you think you could talk with the gentleman, and he still has a question?
Yeah.
All right, and with that-
If you would, Mr. Sir, if you would meet with Lynn right now to get it straightened out in your mind.
Okay. Where I got the 24 feet is I went and asked for a copy of the plans. And the plans that I was shown showed that would be 24 feet to the top of the cupola, and the plans for the other one, Silver Strand, was going to be like 35 feet tall.
If you could talk with her, she does have a copy of the plans, and she, the testimony-
I already got a copy unless they changed the plan, that's the only thing I know.
Yes, and what she's just told us is, isn't that height, so if you could-
I can bring the plans here and show them.
And then again, the plans still are fluid, which is good for this discussion too, so thank you for your testimony, and we'll hopefully get that cleared up. So thank you for your testimony, and we'll hopefully get that cleared up. Our next item, then, is item 28, and this is regarding our Human Resource Division. Good morning, Mr. Zimmerman.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board. This item before you, from time to time, we have to do some items to catch up, classifications, clean up items and so forth, and that's what's presented before you. Let me go over each of them, because there's multiple agencies and multiple departments in this board item. First of all, we have a recommendation for increase the salaries for the resident physicians in the hospital. It's been over three years since they've received any compensation increase and keeping up with market programs similar to this. It is necessary to increase their salaries in order to recruit appropriate residents into the program. And also with this recommendation is also to get ahead of the market a little bit, and to have a recommendation to increase their salary 3% come July. We start recruiting, the hospital starts recruiting for those positions in the fall for '07, and to keep up with the market, we need to offer a wage that can attract these residents to that. So that's what the first item is showing there. Second item are the lifeguards. Also, in order to maintain a competitive environment, lifeguards are very competitive, summer occupation, intermittent employment throughout the summer months with other jurisdictions. And we have done a market survey and increased their wages moderately, as shown there. The next item for the Human Services Agency is just a change in classification titles to be consistent with the previous board letters that went in their reorganization. And then, item B, is to establish new classifications that have come forward from various departments, the first one being a registered veterinarian technician for animal reg, in order to appropriately classify and attract an individual that assists a veterinarian that is licensed and certified. That is the specification and the salary range recommended there. The next two are fleet services classifications and GSA. Those are an update to specifications that did not match the job duties that were being performed. And so we have gone through and clarified those specifications to appropriately classify those individuals. Previously, they were located in a facilities maintenance position, which wasn't reflective. The next two are new classifications that are exempt from civil service positions, the first being the director of the harbor, a director of harbor planning and redevelopment. This is a new position, as the harbor is going through, as you well know, a redevelopment phase. And so it was discussed with the department that qualifications, in order to advance that and appropriately work through the many different regulatory requirements, as well as permitting contract management, those type things, over the redevelopment phase of the harbor, that a new classification would be warranted. We agreed with that, and the recommendation is to create that new classification there. The last one to be added to our salary listing is a LAFCO deputy director, and that was approved at the LAFCO commission meeting a month ago, and that's a carry forward here for your information to add that. The rest of the items here are to delete classifications in order to clean up our salary listing appropriately, as specification and classifications become obsolete and are no longer needed, and we will delete those from their active status. So those are, in general, the items that I have before you today. Any questions that I may entertain, or bring in those that can help?
How long do you estimate it takes to fill these positions?
To fill the new ones?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we've actively started with the veterinarian technician, that is an extremely difficult to recruit position, actually rolls over very fast. Individuals get in it, get the qualifications, and then leave to go to other veterinarian occupations. That one's a continuous. The fleet services is a reclass of the new positions properly classified. The harbor position would be a fairly quick, I think, recruitment and certification. It is exempt from civil service at will, so that does move a little bit faster in that regard. I don't foresee a long-term difficulty in filling these positions at all.
Supervisor Bennett?
It's not a question, just a comment on the residency. When you look at those salaries, and you think of the value that our citizens in Ventura County receive as a result of residency program, it is a great program, and, I mean, this is great value for that, but certainly can support these rates. I also, it was revealed to me the other day, that there's actually, 20 years ago, they actually decreased the medical school enrollment, because they thought there's going to be a shortage, I mean, thought there's going to be a surplus of physicians, and instead, now with all the retirements, they actually have a shortage of physicians. So I'm sure this residency program's going to be full for a while. Great, thank you.
I just wanted to comment regarding the position of director harbor planning and redevelopment. And what I, you know, what I've brought to the board before is just my thinking that we have a planning department that are experts in planning, program management, permit processing. And I know this hasn't been where the direction of the board has been, but just the idea that this is putting a position out there for five to 10 years to do this type of planning work, it just seems to me we have an expertise on our staff already that does this kind of thing, that that would, to me, should be where these kind of processing of permits, planning, management, and such should go normally. And I think that's where our experts are. I feel like we should use them, instead of going and trying to get an expert and put them in the planning, in the harbor department, when we can use our planning staff. Yes, Supervisor Michaels and Mr. Johnston.
You know, I understand that we have planners already on staff, but they certainly are not experts in harbor planning, in voting and waterway issues, those types of things, because they never deal with them. And a lot of the planners that I'm aware of, certainly not on our staff, but it's like when we were trying to do ag planning, or talk about ag structures, we don't have the expertise on our staff, who are truly experts in ag. And I believe the same thing to be true about the harbor. Our people are generalists, so to speak, and so I think there really is a value to have someone who has the expertise in harbor operations and harbor needs, and the needs of boaters, et cetera. So I'm not uncomfortable supporting this.
And I know Supervisor Flynn would
I would just make the comment that, to a great extent, I agree with you. It seems like, years ago, we kind of took things away from public works and things away from the planning, perhaps mainly due to personality problems more than anything else. But we do have a planning department, we have a public works department. The public works department, in my view, ought to be dealing with any kind of construction, and need to return that to public works. I think, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I think that airports is returning now to public works, whereas they kind of had their own little tiny public works department.
You want fire, is looking at that.
Fire, fire, I think, right, I'm sorry.
Well, and overall, though, I agree, we need someone who's an expert at this. So whether it's in the harbor department or in the planning department, this is something that I think is lacking, so I do support that position. But I'm just thinking that we already have a whole group of folks that do something very similar to this. Doesn't involve coastal commission, but it's very similar in terms of plan check and permitting and following the project through. So I'll go ahead and support the motion, if there is one. Second. We have a motion in a second.
For the recommended actions.
For the recommended actions, and seeing no objection, and that passes. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Title of the ordinance, an amendment to the Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 1, Chapter 3, Article 4, Civil Service System.
Okay, thank you. And that motion passes unanimously. We'll now go on to item 29. This is adjustment to the living wage rate, and this is something that I think is already part of the original resolution. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Johnston, Del Thompson's with the county executive office. The recommendations before you today are concerning the second adjustment to the living wage rate since the board adopted the ordinance in 2001. The first recommendation is to accept notification of a 50-cent adjustment effective July 1, which would take the base wage rate from $8.50 an hour, plus health benefits, to $9 per hour, or the flat rate, which is currently $10.50 an hour, to $11 an hour. The ordinance specifies that adjustments are to be automatic unless the CEO notifies your board that to do so would place an undue burden on the county's budget. While we anticipate there will be some potential impacts related to a 50-cent increase, they're not considered substantial enough to place an undue burden on the county's budget. The second recommendation would be for your board to adopt a salary resolution adjusting the salary for extra help county worker to $11 per hour. That's the only county classification that would be impacted by a 50-cent adjustment to the living wage rate. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Move the argument.
Motion is second, seeing no objection, and that passes. Item 30, yes?
I'd like to use this as an opportunity to emphasize the, again, the issue of labor costs that we're going to start looking at. This is but one, you know, in-home healthcare service workers, another which somewhat ties to this. But it's really an indication of the inflationary pressures that are starting to pick up, something that we've not had to cope with for the last four or five years. I suspect they're going to start gaining momentum, and it's just something that everybody needs to be aware of. Yesterday, when you heard a lot of the presentations, you would see some of the staffing histories of the departments, and saying, we have fewer employees today than we did five years ago. I want to remind everybody that we made a conscious decision in this county that we were going to have fewer employees and pay them adequately to recruit and retain quality employees, even if we had to do less work in the process. Those pressures are really now going to start in the next year or two, going to be something to be coped with, and we just need to keep that in the public, as well as the policymakers' minds.
I thought it was interesting last night, in that, you know, people would show that they have fewer people than they had before, but the whole point was, we had to get the base down, because we simply don't have increases that could cover that. You had to have to cut that base down.
And to complement and abstentia today, Stan Trom, to think of what he's been dealing with, as a state-funded department, he's 33% down in staffing, maintaining an increased workload, and no increase in budget over the last few years, so we should remember him in our prayers.
Thank you. Our next item, then, is item 30, and regarding appointing chairs and vice chairs.
Good morning. I'm Norma Camacho at the county executive office, also staff through the tobacco settlement advisory committees. And I'm here today to provide to your board recommendations for the appointments of our chair and vice chair of our tobacco settlement advisory committees. For our tobacco settlement allocation committee, we are recommending William Moritz, who is currently representative of District 1, as the chair, and Maury Navarro, who is representing District 5, as vice chair. For the tobacco settlement finance committee, we're recommending Dan Goldstein as chair and Greg Ramirez as vice chair. These appointments will be effective beginning July 1 of 2006, and will run through June 30 of 2007. And if I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that at this time.
Have any questions? We have a motion, and we have a second. Thank you for the report, and that passes unanimously. Welcome to the new chairs and vice chairs. Our next item on the agenda is item 31, and this is regarding authorization for some grants from the district attorney's office, who are stellar grant appliers.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Parks, board members. Mr. Johnston, Mel Chambers with the DA's office. This item before you today is just seeking authorization to apply for a small grant for $10,000 from the California Consumer Protection Prosecution Trust Fund. It'll fund some work that we're having done on a white-collar crime. It's a one-time item. If it's granted and approved, we'll bring the item back to the board for appropriate adjustments to the budget.
Thank you.
To answer any questions you might have.
And we did hear yesterday that that is a growing concern, too. A motion?
Move the argument.
And a second? Thank you, seeing no objections, that passes.
Thank you.
And we'll move right on to item 32, with our public works agency, Mr. Britt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Blitschbrich from Public Works Agency. We're here to recommend that your board adopt a resolution continuing Avista services, that's 126 and 101, both services. The services have been in existence since 1994. We have made minor changes through the years with Saturday service adding, and some changes in hours. This year, there has been some increases for fuel, price increases, and slight change in the formula for cost distribution. The first four recommendations are similar to, as we've done in the past. The fifth recommendation, the reason this is not on the consent, is we are asking your board to direct us to send a letter to VCTC in the future, to have the data by which the various decisions are made available to the decision-makers in advance of the meeting. That was not possible this year, and we are asking that they do that next year. They agreed to provide it in advance, but I think we need to follow up with a letter to them, asking them to do that. And should your board wish to do any other, make any more other recommendations or directions to us, we've left item 6 in there, just as a filler item. We have no specific recommendations for your board, other than the recommendations before you today.
Thank you. There was a bit of a snafu on at least the Avista 101, in terms of notifying the individuals who were supposed to be at the meeting and make the decisions. Are there any changes in terms of who the alternate voting members are? Was this the way it was previously, that it would be staff that would be the alternate?
It was staff, it would be alternate.
That was the way it was previously?
Basically, I did have the director of transportation, instead of director of public works, as the alternate. Because of Mr. Coon's schedule, he's not always available to go to meetings, and I can be a little bit more available than him.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this one? Do we have a motion?
Just, yeah, I'll put the motion on the table.
Second.
And just a comment that Kathy Connell, who's covered this well for years, but there was a snafu with both committees, and I think part of it is that the commission waited too long to really start getting people's calendars together for this meeting, and I think that, as a result of that, we'll have a better process this next time, so. But support the recommended action.
I think there were some email addresses that were wrong, so two of us were left out.
Yeah.
All right, we do have a motion and a second, seeing no objection, and the fares aren't going to change, that's good.
No, fare will change this year.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you for coming. Our next item is item 33. This is the Watershed Protection District with Mr. Pratt. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Mr. Johnston, for the record, my name's Jeff Pratt, with the Watershed Protection District. The next item on your agenda is approval of a consulting services contract for an EIR on the Lake Canyon Dam project. Recall that Lake Canyon Dam is a project on the Arendelle drainage in the city of Ventura. It's designed to operate in conjunction with an already constructed dam, the Arendelle Dam. There was a draft EIR prepared for this project in the past, was prepared in the late 90s. County council and our CEQA experts have reviewed it, it's determined to be inadequate, largely because we expect a legal challenge on this document, and because there was a significant alternative that wasn't looked at, enlarging Arendelle rather than building a separate dam. Enlarging Arendelle was not looked at because of requests of the property owners. Staff recommends your approval of the contract and the contract amount, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions?
Will the EIR now look at enlarging Arendelle?
It will.
Thank you. I'm going to do a recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second, seeing no objection, and that passes. And our next item will be our 9:30 item, and it looks like we have about four minutes, so let's take a short little break, and then we'll begin again at 9:30. We can do that.
Then passes. We'll go to item 25, which is our last 9:30 item, and this is an ordinance relating to the consumer protection business permit.
Morning, Board members. Paul Dirsey, County Executive Officer. This is the second reading of the ordinance, and I'm here to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Seeing objections, then that will pass.
We're not going to catch Mr. Nicole because we could go into closed session right now.
Yes, Mr. Nicole. We're now at our next item on our agenda, which is our closed session item, and from that we will...
It's only better snagging than...
From our closed session, then we will...
Paul, would you see if you can catch John Nicole?
...adjourn until our next meeting. We do have an 11 o'clock air pollution control district meeting also, so at this point, then we will go into closed session. Do you expect an announcement, Mr. Claylon?
There is a possibility of an announcement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I don't know if I've made this observation before.
... 175 insurers of claims that might involve coverage. The county has also agreed to pay $39,000 of the plaintiff's attorney's fees. Thank you.
And that settlement expires after three years.
That's correct.
Thank you, and we'll go back in the closed session. Thank you.